Yes, sir. My name is Captain Williams located 1112 East Scott Street, Paradise Missionary Baptist Church. You know, we thank God for this day, whether you all thank Him or not. But I thank God for every day He gave me life because I'm heading to the graveyard. And for me, that's gonna be a pleasure. God is so good to all of us. Many people don't believe in God, that's their business. But I'm a bona fide believer in God Almighty because He let me be born into this world. I gave a flyer to the counselor and for him to give one to the mayor. I'm not gonna give all of you all one because when I pass you all a flyer up there, no one will never respond. But this one here, here, I want to make sure that the mayor gets this. Because the way they treat people of color is less than a damn dog. And we got to stand up. You know what? Some of the people that I try to stand up for, they'd be against me. But you got to understand, when you put God first in your life, it doesn't make no difference who you stand up for. God has been so good to me and I give Him the glory and the praise every day of my life. And, you know, my brother was in World War II, just in case if you all don't know. He went to the service when he was only 16 years old. My mama got a telegram, a long time ago, they used to deliver the telegram on their little bicycle. Brought it to my mom and she found out my brother had been killed. Not only was he killed, but he had been buried. So my daddy went up to New York and told the officer and everything. He was in the service, he served in World War II, and they had to assume him, bring him up. Y'all don't give me a chance enough to speak my speak.
No, keep going.
Can't y'all give me a little bit more time, please?
Keep going, keep going.
Okay. So my daddy told him, say, well, he was in the service and he should have a military burial. And sure enough, they wouldn't tell him how he died. But when he took him up out of the grave, found all kinds of knots upside the head. Police had done beat him upside the head. He told me he gonna give me time. Police had done beat him upside the head and bury him, everything. You know, it's so sad, people can hate people of color so bad for no reason at all. Not only do they hate colored people, they hate little white children. White boy go out there and kill little innocent children in school, which is ridiculous, but they do it. They done did many times. And so that's why I get out of my sick bed to come down here to try to talk to you all. But nobody want to listen. But Counselor, I pray to God that you give that cover sheet to the mayor. And I want to make sure, but I'm gonna get through everybody one day sooner or later because I'm not a person that's gonna sit down or lay down and keep quiet. I got to tell what's going on. The truth is the life. And who is the life? Jesus Christ. I thank God that He is the life. Because what we doing down here, they call the United States of America, with God Almighty, it stinks.
Thank you very much, sir.
It stinks. And God has been so good to us, we got to give Him praise and give Him more glory. You know what they doing now? They trying to take my church, 11212 East Scott Street. Y'all come down there and you know what I used to do? I used to feed the poor people. The guy come in there with their duffel bag and bicycles, come on in the church. I used to whack them in the church.
Thank you very much, sir.
I ain't gonna put nobody out of this church because they not dress like we are or like you all are. We must do what God want us to do. And that's to try to please all of God, yeah. Thank you for that time.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it so much. And God bless all of you.
All right, next speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy birthday and welcome back. Reading the, I'm kind of lost with thoughts because I'm thinking about my time on the media, but anyway, I was really inspired by that young man this morning because I was just thinking about the pathway for so many young 20-year-old that can serve as an example if just given some opportunity, some leadership, some guidance. Having his parents here, his grandparents here, some of that is so missing in so many communities that if young people can have that opportunity of turnaround. And so when I'm looking at the agenda, I'm just thinking about jobs, jobs, opportunities, and hope can be the beginning of that. I'm concerned about the overlay for East Tampa. I believe that can be a first start when we are talking about bringing in the wealth gap, that if people had the opportunity to say have accessory dwelling unit is one of the biggest pieces and concerns that I have for East Tampa. I believe it can offer stabilization in our community as well as building for better family involvement. I am also concerned too about the $12 million that will be, I think it's 106, well, the big housing development and the $12 million that's gonna be an interest-free loan. When given the presentation of the day, out of 354 units, only six of the units is for three bedrooms. And so that tells me that it's quite opposed to families. Out of 354 units, only six of the units will be for three bedrooms. And so while in East Tampa, we have a lot of families that need housing stabilization, that would be one of them. And you know, I'm not, I don't have the time to continue to argue to show that every synonym that we have used to describe the needs of what poor people need, if we say housing, then we got to say workforce housing. If we say workforce housing, we have to say affordable housing. We need housing. And a couple of weeks ago, from your real estate department, you were shown lots that was undesirable, unbuildable for traditional. We need to press the gas on that and accelerate very, very fast so we can start stabilizing in South, in East Tampa so we can give young people, just like that young man, the ability to hope. But I believe that the hope start with having a housing foundation as its guiding point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, next speaker.
My name's Danielle Ferrari and I own a business in Seminole Heights called Holly Resale. And I'm coming here today to talk about the Seminole Heights, the Southeast Seminole Heights flooding relief project. All council members have already gotten a letter from me about that. And I'm here to sort of carry on the flag because I know a lot of residents and other business owners have brought forth other issues about this project continuously. I worked in heavy civil construction for over a decade, and this is the worst-run project I've ever witnessed. And the city's continued disregard of public safety, of litter issues, of harassment, discrimination, retaliation, property damage, theft is just really concerning. And I'm not gonna rest until the residents and business owners of Seminole Heights really have gotten justice. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Council. Welcome back. Y'all look refreshed. Happy birthday, Councilman Meniscakle.
Thank you very much.
The young man, the firefighter. So when the description of who he was, what he did was identified, or you know, that story was being told, what struck me was that he was very particular in regards to the toilet tissue. That, you know, that's a joke, right? It's fun. But most of all, he had the heart to serve. It's more than just, even than what I do, right? If it's a job to you, then you're not gonna do the extra. But if you have the heart for that job, you're gonna go and see because you care, right? And that was so important, that was the biggest thing I identified with that young man, that he has the heart. And no, he is not gonna, he should not be a politician. He should be gearing towards, if he continues that, he'll be the chief of police, a fire chief, a fire chief. So I was just so impressed and he, at just a young age, with just discipline, heart, and grit. I really appreciated that story and appreciated him. Access dwellings, accessory dwellings, I agree with that. But if Council push forth as they appear they are, I think that everything with accessory dwelling is a plus. But my only concern with accessory dwelling is individuals saying it is for housing and it end up being an Airbnb. So a way that you can prevent that or code that or whatever, I don't know where it is. I know, you know, a while back, we were discussing it, discussing, discussing it. But I see a lot of it is pushing, being pushed forward. So how do you prevent those dwellings not to become Airbnb and they really be affordable housing for, because we're thinking outside of the box. It's a piece of the puzzle that fits because we're thinking differently around housing. So just be very mindful of that because that's my only concern about that. I'm concerned about the new project that's coming up on Hillsborough. If it's only, if it's true that it only has six units that has three bedrooms, that's a concern of mine.
Sixty units, sixty units.
So it's 63 bedrooms? Okay, then that's, okay. And what I've been reading in the newspaper, and we'll come back to this, the mobility department resignations, and it appears that they're all women. That's troubling. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before I begin, can I ask the City Council, do you have the authority to fix the problem with the sidewalk that's trying to kill my 500-year-old tree? Because I've been told by Cal Hardy of the City of Tampa that it's his decision and not yours.
Cal Hardy told you that it was his decision?
Not the City Council's.
Huh. Mr. Shelby, and I know there's more information to this, but what is your name for the record?
My name is Jill Corcoran and I live across the street from the disaster area that is the Ritz-Carlton and Related Group construction site.
So, Mr. Shelby, the young lady has come to us several times and she is across the street, as she just mentioned. The tree and the sidewalk in question, the City Council have authority to halt, fix, order, request changes to that?
So they not kill the tree?
Well, certainly you have the ability to request information from staff and then take action based upon what is they provide. Was this put in any sort of motion or was this?
No, she's presented to us before, spoken to us before. You have photographs.
Several times, many.
So what I think we should do is, you know, speak now and then we can make an official motion as City Council and then take it from there.
This is the 500-year-old tree that is right in front of my home.
Please state your name again.
I'm sorry, my name's Jill Corcoran. I live at 2913 West Santiago Street, directly across the street from the disaster area that is the Related Group in Ritz-Carlton. I have this tree in my front yard and this tree has a canopy that covers four of the homes of the 11 homes in the townhouses that I live in. We're being terrorized in our homes by these people. They drop garbage on our houses and into our bay every single day. They have let pieces of cardboard, cement, windows, stuffing, and even a full piece of plywood fly off of their buildings to have no one stop them from doing this. Now they want to put a sidewalk over this tree so that it kills it. I don't know if that's their end game, but I've been told very specifically by Mike Hammond of the Related Group that my home is an eyesore. And I'm sure that if he keeps terrorizing me, I'll leave it, they can buy it for a song. But that's really not gonna happen. I've lived there for 20 years. This tree has lived there for 500 years. The Ritz-Carlton even has the nerve to put this on their website and to talk about the ancient oaks that line the street. I'm sorry, they don't anymore, and I'll tell you why. They cut them all down and I watched them do it this week. Every tree along Isabella has been hacked to the ground. You've gotten rid of every tree over there. 98.2% of the trees on 22 acres are gone. We have a tree symposium tonight. I don't know if any of you will be joining, but I think that you should. We've decimated 3,300 acres of trees and canopy in our city for people like the Ritz-Carlton, the Related Group. They practically raped those 22 acres. There's nothing left there but cement and dirt. And now to make matters worse, they want to kill off this tree by putting a sidewalk over it. But if that's not enough, they've also asked that the communication lines run right across the structural roots that keep that tree standing there. They want to drill through those to put the communication lines on my side of the street instead of theirs, where they have nothing but dirt and cement right now anyway. And nobody's stopping them. Nobody will, the city will even listen to me at this point. They don't care. I'm just one single mom who has lived there for 20 years. I'm not a $22 billion corporation that is paying you to let them do all of this to our city. And I need to know who to talk to that can actually take some sort of action and stop these people.
So just to clarify, the sidewalk is on your side of Isabella, right?
I'm on Santiago Street and there's never been a sidewalk on either side of Santiago Street. And there are 200 units that were affordable housing, people who actually walked up and down Bay Shore regularly. Those have all been decimated for the 202 units that they're putting up of skyscrapers, of which the studio, the only one that's under $2 million, was $1.6 million, with a $3,200 monthly maintenance fee. So none of us are gonna be able to live there. However, these people took all of this space, all of this time, and now they want to make my home a piece of trash too. They want to get rid of the trees. They want to eliminate part of my yard for the sidewalk, even though the sidewalk that I have, while it should be extended another foot, should be extended out towards the street because everywhere else along Bay Shore, that space of grass is between 12 inches and 24 inches. And at my house, it's three feet. And it's just something else that I have to mow, but they want to knock down my fence, my brick fence.
So what I think we should do under New Business is either I'll make the motion or one of the council members specifically requesting that they stop this construction of the sidewalk in order to protect the tree and then go, you know, take it from there. Whether Mr. Hardy said he has the authority or not, I think we should make the request as a formal body so we can stop that and prevent this tree and any other damage from happening.
I would be very grateful. When can that be done?
Today, at the end of the meeting under New Business. Officially, we would make the motion. I'll be happy to do it or one of the council members, but Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to say, the City Council is very limited at what we can do to stop the administration. We can pass a resolution or something this afternoon. In the case of Related Group, most likely they'll ignore it. There are several examples where this administration is particularly cozy with this particular company. And I think you're gonna get nowhere with the city. I think you need to go to the Attorney General, the Ethics Commission, FDLE, or some other group to try to appeal to stop this situation. It is an endemic situation that unfortunately, when it comes to certain particular companies, where certain former elected officials are lobbyists for them or other...
Like the mayor's wife?
People are, nothing happens. And so to be really direct, if I were, I wouldn't waste time because we can pass a resolution today and nothing's gonna happen, they're gonna ignore it. Complaints about other companies get fixed right away, but for some reason, this company, nothing happens.
Well, in two instances, these people would, there would have been people killed if there'd been people in the street. The one where they let the plywood fly off of their building, it sheared off the portico of one of our homes. Had there been anybody standing there, any of their friends, Uber Eats, Amazon, that person would have been killed. It took out four fences and it took out the portico on their porch.
Councilman Clenwell.
And nothing was done.
Yeah, I actually had gone and responded to the citizen about this a little while ago and went out one day and it was my understanding that the city was there to, because while I was there, the city was there. I'm assuming that you did not, they did not reach a decision that was equitable to you in that sidewalk during that time when I was there?
No, no, they haven't.
Yeah, if anybody from Related is listening, I don't have any tolerance for this either. I mean, it's just, this is one of those common sense things that really government needs to intervene because it is common sense that this shouldn't, this should not occur and it would be a travesty if it did. I fully support your agenda here and if nobody else does, I'll make that motion under New Business. But hopefully somebody from Related is listening and understands that, at least from one City Councilman's perspective, that this is just completely outside of common sense and they need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll reach out to both of your offices to get the information that you recommended of the people I contact.
I am going to let my colleagues help you with that issue. I am incredibly concerned, and no one has talked about it yet, about trash flying off of a building.
Every day.
So I am, have you at all spoken to anyone in code enforcement?
Yes.
Or the, I guess it's not code enforcement, it's the building department's code enforcement, yeah, construction services?
Unfortunately, they all have my number, most of them won't answer the phone for me anymore.
So, no, nothing is being done?
Nothing. I have four bags of trash I picked up out of my yard alone. My yard is minuscule. I'm not even in a quarter of an acre. And I've picked up five bags of trash and they are in paper bags because I'm keeping them. I can drop them off here if you'd like, but the Ritz-Carlton Group told me that we'll be along to pick up that trash. My question would be, when? And how are you gonna get it out of the bay? I belong to the women's club, that's another three or four doors down from me. Those people get as much trash in their yard as I do. And the answer to that is, have your workers use a garbage can. Have you never heard of one? I'm not allowed to throw garbage on the ground where I work.
That's a very big safety concern of mine, so I would absolutely love to help in that regard.
And I'm happy to provide photographic evidence of all of this.
Okay, thank you very much. My aide Kelly Scharf is in the red right there, so you can pass along information and then we'll get to all of our aides as well.
Thank you, I appreciate your attention to this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, yes, sir. Councilman Viera, please unmute yourself. You're still muted, sir.
I probably won't be here.
Go ahead.
Are you all here?
Go ahead, go ahead.
During the motion, I would suggest respectfully that it not just be a resolution of council for a preference on this 500-year-old tree, but that we have somebody from staff come, as well as somebody from Related come to speak on this issue so that we can see if there can be a resolution of it as opposed to just a request whenever the motion's done because this is a very obvious and very, very acute, serious issue. That's all, since I probably won't be here for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I see Nicole and Vic online. Did you want to speak?
Morning Chair, Vic P. A., Director, Mobility Department. I just would like to assure Council and the community that we have had three different tree experts work with the designer, the developer's designer, as well as our right-of-way permitting team. We have a tree expert on board as well. We're going to recommend a design that establishes a sand base and puts a sidewalk on top of that. We're very sensitive to this being a grand tree and not being impacted. And all parties are in agreement, those that are reviewing and designing this, that it will not kill the tree. For us, it's a matter of having walkability in the area and even though there's a sidewalk on the south side, we want to make sure there's a sidewalk in the north as well. So in this case, we are preserving the tree, we're very sensitive to it, but also facilitating a sidewalk. And any other items, I'll be happy to clarify should they request.
Thank you very much. Nicole, Travis, anything?
Good morning, Council. I just wanted to reassure you all that this issue has not been ignored, that Abby Feely has personally been involved in this and the complaints, they are picking up the trash. She has called Related to the carpet and had serious meetings and stern meetings with them. So I just, you know, the comment that we're, it's being ignored and nothing is happening is that staff is trying and we would be happy to report back and bring the Related Group to respond in outlining also what they have done to help prevent some of the trash. They are picking up trash sometimes. The resident picks up the trash before they pick it up, but we'll let them come and outline all of this information for you. But I assure you that we are involved and are trying very hard.
Thank you very much. All right, next speaker, yes, sir. Please state your name.
Men tis not Tampa, Florida. Want to say huru. Huru means freedom in Swahili. Say, we as African people should always be thinking about our freedom and we should always be wise to everything that's going on around us, but not only what's contemporarily going on around us, but what has historically happened behind us to know how it got this way. It's interesting to see how capitalism can reduce rational-thinking people, the masses of people are nothing, to absolutely positively nothing. Come down to City Council and talk about garbage. African people suffering, we've been suffering for 623 years. And the height of the existence of the average African person you can see talks about absolutely positively nothing. Basketball, boxing, football, dancing, rapping, while most of the things that affects African people, nobody talks about. Why is that? Because our white oppressors got it that way. Our white oppressors got it that way. We don't talk about infant mortality rate, we don't talk about alcoholism, we don't talk about drug addiction, we don't talk about the prison industrial complex, we don't talk about shortened life expectancy, we don't talk about a school system that we pay taxes to that don't educate. The average African person on earth has a second grade education. The average African person on earth has a second grade education while white people going in outer space. Y'all spent 10 minutes talking about MFN tree. And I can come here and talk about the reparations white folks owe us and I'll walk away from this podium, they don't say a word about it. Not one single word. People come to a place where they talk about politics and they don't use the word capitalism or imperialism. They don't use the word oppression, they just talk about garbage. Strictly nonsense. Homelessness, nonsense. Police violence, nonsense. We have to talk about reparations and capitalism and imperialism and what it has done to African people, scared African people up for 623 years. That man right there done been down to the city, to the clerk of circuit court testifying against me for trying to talk about black people in this room. Arrested on numerous occasions because y'all think y'all got, y'all murdered Martin Luther King and Malcolm X and other people and think y'all got black folk scared. That's why black people don't come down here, they scared.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chagret Dos, and I'm here and I'm gonna keep coming until I get what I want, which is a public records request. And shout out to Sister Connie because she talked about housing. And I want to show everybody, this is what a reasonable public records request might look like. I don't know if this is upside down or what have you. But that's $70.
Turn it around, turn it around.
So now, thank you for helping with the orientation. So we're gonna talk about a few things. In 2017, I was arrested and charged with perjury. And I want to show everybody, because I guess you all don't believe me when I say, I own property, see? My name right there at the top. There's from the... There's from the property appraiser, and I'm gonna get to the point. The property appraiser posted I was the owner, the house is up under it, clear as day. Here's a certificate of sale for that property. Certificate of title for the same property. Quick clean deed and made in mind. Same thing applies in all the other four instances where I own property. Certificate of sale and title, property appraiser showing that I'm the owner, you can't see it. I'll make it clear tonight on a podcast, but there it is, because people question these things. But I don't make it up, I'm not that creative. I don't sing, I don't play any instruments. I can run good routes, catch a football, and I can dance. And I can read. And apparently somebody downtown thought it was kind of funny, to the extent that I only got five pages, of course, of emails, but this is a public records request that came from the sheriff's office, and you're gonna see the name of somebody who the City of Tampa's, uh, the Tribune is doing a little article on, making him out to be a great guy, but they didn't mention that this guy initiated a police, uh, investigation on me at the behest, apparently or allegedly, of that guy who used to be a judge in Hills, in Hillsborough County. Now, up until two weeks ago, when you all went on vacation, I had the redacted version. So I didn't even know that this version actually existed.
Turn, turn it around, it's upside down.
This version existed. So now you see who the state's lead witness was supposed to be, and I knew nothing of this other than the allegations. So, but I wanted to let everybody see this right here. They say theoretically, cause I wanted to rush through this, theoretically, I guess he would have owned the properties on the day he made the allegation that he didn't own any property, which I never made, by the way, and if they think I did, tell them to produce it. I'll check the other property deeds, although I believe many of the deeds we did not post show the property in his name, which we now know is a lie, because we doubt it, he legally owned the property in spite of the deeds. So what you all told everybody who owns a deed to a property, you don't even own your own property. You all take care. Shout out to University of Thomas Jefferson High School and Fred McGriff.
Thank you very much. Councilman Carlson.
I, I've heard you say this several times, I just want to let you know, um, I also file public records requests, and I also don't get responses, or it takes two or three months, and I have to pay, uh, as a city council member. And, um, the, the Tampa Bay Times, Creative Loafing, and others have outstanding, uh, public records requests going back months that haven't been filled. Although some documents that are adverse to city council get leaked, um, without a public records request. Documents that are adverse to administration take two or three months sometimes, and they're impossible to get in there, incomplete even when we get them and pay for them. So, uh, I don't think city council has any authority to resolve this. If I were you also, I would take it to the Attorney General. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it, but we're not talking about two or three months, we're talking about six years, cause that's when the case was filed.
Thank you very much.
And it's a part of my, uh, request for discovery in my criminal case, which I still didn't get. You all take care, and I'll hand it over to.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak at this time? If not, we have three registered public comment speakers that'll complete public comment after that.
It comes on a policy matter that has a long time.